This meeting will be broadcast live through the local cable access channel and on the public access Facebook page. And will be found on Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So the next thing we're going to do is Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next topic on the agenda is public comment. Is there any member of the public on Zoom? There is no member of the public in person. There's no member of the public on Zoom and there's no one in person here. So we're going to go straight to the Chair's report.
Public comment?
Oh, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Stevenson and his first period civic engagement class for inviting me in today for a conversation about how to get involved in your community and what it means to be a member of a public board. They were very attentive, very interested, and it was a lovely start to my day. So thank you very much to Mr. Stevenson and the crew.
Are there any other public comments? All right. Chair's report. So Mr. Leighton is not here tonight, and so I don't believe there's anything that we need to review in terms of a Chair's report. He did provide other reports that are in the meeting's Google folder, and we'll get to those later. We're going to review and approve minutes. So let me take a look and make sure we got all of these. The minutes from the 7th of August 2024 meeting. So everybody had a chance to review those minutes. And is there a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So moved.
I will second that.
All right. And then because we have everybody present, we don't need to do a roll call vote, so just vote. All in favor of accepting the minutes from the 7th of August?
Aye. And thank you to Courtney for typing out everything.
Word for word.
Like that is, I've noticed she's been doing that lately, the public comments, not just summarizing. So that is much appreciated. And it really captures people's words. So thank you to that. I know that's a lot of work.
The next thing on the agenda is review and approve line item transfers and warrants. So is this Dr. Gilson?
There are...
Yeah, I'm only seeing warrants.
No line item transfers this evening.
Any warrants that we need to look at?
No.
All right.
Just that they total $377,999.8, and that covers the time period from September 3rd through September 13th.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Burnham. We're going to add one item to the agenda, and we're going to put it right here. And it is because we have a student representative, and so we're going to do the student representative report now.
Okay. So for the district, we have that meals are free this year. Homecoming is October 19th. Back-to-school forums are due. Chromebook insurance needs to be bought by September 20th. After-school music lessons are now open. The musicators need volunteers, and the PTO needs volunteers. And then for the high school, we have that picture days today, and that there was a good open house last week. 2028 still needs a class advisor, the class of 2028. The Spain trip still has two spots to fill. And there are currently classrooms that are remaining like under 60 degrees at times throughout the day. In the middle school, there is a Washington DC meeting, October 8th, for parents at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. And they had picture day yesterday. Turkey Hill had their open house earlier today, and they have a book fair that is open until the 20th. And the primary school has their open house tomorrow.
Just a quick comment. I attended the Turkey Hill open house tonight, and it was the best open house that I have been to since I've had children. It was really fun. We did a scavenger hunt, and the kids were able to introduce their parents' teachers. And the music teacher sang peaches with the kids. It was a really good time. There was a ton of people there. I would guess that there was like 90% attendance. There were cars parked all over the place, including on that little grass island.
That's safe.
Yeah, it was unbelievable. There were four cars parked on that grass island. It was like a clown car from a circus. I had a really good time. So I just wanted to make sure that those people got credit.
Yep, went to the same open house. We did the fifth grade one, so the second shift. I like that they break it into two because there would be no parking if they tried to fit everyone in. And it was well-attended, and having the kids attend too seems to, I think, have increased participation. I don't know if we tracked the numbers on that, but it seemed like there was a lot more people there. Or maybe it just seemed like that because there was a bunch of fifth graders running around. But it was fantastic, and it was nice in the scavenger hunt. We did something like that last year, but it was a good way to get the kids excited about showing us their school. And I like the pride they take in showing us around the environment they're in every day.
Totally agree. It was great. Is there anything else from the student representative? All right.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. And next on the agenda is Dr. Burnham's report.
So first I'll start off. Since it's the beginning of the school year, I'm going to put in a plug for the PTO. They're always looking for new members. Their next meeting is Monday, October 7th at 7:00 PM in this room here at the middle high school. As you, I'm sure, are all aware, there's been a water main replacement project underway on Mass Ave. In recent days, the water main replacement project work has been focused in the area of the driveway entrance at the primary school. Friday, we did experience a loss of water pressure for a period of time due to flushing of a hydrant located near the primary school. There were some slight delays with buses in the recent days. However, there's been excellent communication between the water department, my office, and DBUS. And we are really grateful for that good communication. In the near future, they'll be ready to convert the water flow from the temporary line to the new main. That will require that the water be shut off. They will keep us updated as to when that will happen. We did advise them that we will need, you know, some advance notice so that we can alert families if there's going to be any impact to the school day. There have been some road paving projects around town. Bill Bernard, the DPW director, has been excellent about providing us advance notice so that we can communicate with DBUS. Reconfigure routes if needed and make families aware. And when he can, he also notifies the crew what time the buses roll, both in the morning and in the afternoon. And wherever possible, the buses are allowed to pass through on that roadway underwork there. So we greatly appreciate that as well. Quick update on green communities. Dr. Gilson and I have been working with members of the Green Committee here in town along with a representative from the Green Communities organization and Unitile. The mini splits that were installed this summer are eligible for rebate. The Green Committee will be working with us to submit a grant proposal to fund Phase 2 of the mini split project at the primary school. We are hopeful that we'll be able to secure satisfactory energy savings assessment documentation in time to submit by the October 18th deadline. The round of grants submitted this fall will be reviewed and awarded in the spring, which means that we would be able to complete Phase 2 in the summer of 2025 if we are a grant recipient. And if that works out well, we would be ready to submit a proposal for mini splits at Turkey Hill in the fall of 2025. And if awarded, that project would be in the summer of 2026. However, we are anticipating that the grant will not fully fund the entire Turkey Hill project. Fall benchmark assessments. The iReady fall benchmark assessments will be completed this week. We plan to do Zoom calls, as we have in the last few years, for each school so that parents can come and hear about the iReady data and any MCAS results if it's applicable to your school. More information will be forthcoming from the school. Spring 2024 MCAS results. We have finally gotten access to the spring 2024 MCAS results. We are looking at the data in a variety of ways. The initial review shows movement in the right direction, particularly in math. We look forward to sharing the results here at the school committee on October 16th, and that will be a high-level district view. Hidden highlights, not a detailed presentation, although you will have a more in-depth report that you can review. Reminder that tomorrow and Friday is school picture day at the primary school. Open houses, as we know, Turkey Hill was tonight. Primary school is tomorrow evening. Another reminder that September 27th is an early release day for students so that we can have some professional development time for staff. And school committee meetings coming next are October 2nd from Town Hall, hybrid via Zoom, 6:30. October 16th, again from this room here at the middle high school, hybrid via Zoom at 6:30. And that's all I have for this evening.
All right. Did you like your hallway accompaniment?
It was lovely.
One of your students, I'm sure. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation?
There are no presentations.
All right. After that, new business. And I think the one that we're going to talk about up first is grant authorization.
Yes. So in your packet, you have a summary of two grants that we would like to pursue. One is an IT grant, the Cyber Resilient Massachusetts Grant Program. It's for cybersecurity improvements. Funding would allow us to purchase power supplies, replacement networks, switches, and switch licensing that increases our cybersecurity posture. That grant is a small grant in the amount of about $25,000. The second grant that we would be looking for approval to submit is the Prism 1 grant. You have additional documents in your folders for this evening. That would be a multi-year grant. And... Dr. Bukas, our Director of Teaching and Learning, is on the call and can answer any questions if you have questions about the Prism grant.
Are you looking for approval?
Yes, approval for us to submit.
Okay, and you need that tonight?
It's time-sensitive, yes.
Could you please explain just at a very high level, for my benefit, having not seen these documents before tonight, what the grant is intended to fund and what additional requirements that will put on the district, either in supplemental funds or picking up to continue to fund this after the grant is fully expended?
Yes, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Bukas.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's real set. Actually, on the second page of the grant information in your packet, there's a chart that shows all the different things that this grant can fund. Personnel positions, study ends for educators to work outside contractual time, study ends for the leadership team that will be working with the Department of Ed. Coach that will be assigned substitute costs so teachers can be relieved to engage in professional learning assessments, additional assessments that can be purchased, early literacy screening, as well as for Tier 2 and Tier 3 instruction, and then different types of instructional materials. How did you construct this? Is the first year, which would have to be the next year. So this is a planning year. We would be assigned a coach, and we would develop a vision as well as to...
What?
...in the audit, screens, and we have this assessment of the district in terms of early literacy, and then we develop a plan. The following year, everything that the plan asks for will be fully funded by the Department of Ed. And then every consecutive year after that, about 25% of whatever is funded through would then be assumed by the budget. However, over time, there are things that one-time purchases or substitutes or study ends, over time, would not be needed to occur in those costs because that grant would already have taken place. Personnel would be something that would be ongoing, so that would be something certainly to consider. But it is a five-year grant, and it is intended that the district would, over time, absorb some of the cost into the ongoing budget.
Are we committing to spending this money? So for example, in the fifth year, we... What was it? In the fourth year, we're spending, we're covering 75% of the costs that the grant said that we need to spend. If we can't afford to cover that cost and we need to make budget cuts, do we have, are we mandated to cover the things that were in this grant?
So what we don't know yet is what the grant should afford us. We have to do that planning with the Department of Ed first to determine what the needs are and make determinations whether or not we would go forward with those things. And again, over time, there are certain things that we may do the first year and 100% cover it, and we may not then choose to do this following year based on how much we can take on within the budget. So it's not a 75% of the formal amount. It would be the amount that we would need to continue whenever we want to continue into the following year.
Additionally, I'd offer that this grant is aligned with our Student Opportunity Act plan. That is a three-year plan.
Okay. One of the things we've tried to work on is not having acronyms for things. So in this overview of the Prism grant information, what is an LEA?
Oh, an LEA...
That's a school district.
Right.
Local education.
That's directly from...
Okay.
...has language. That's your learning environment area. It's just the boundaries of your tech, the school district.
Okay, so does LEA mean us and Harvard? Or is an LEA specific to Lunenburg? And we would have to divide with Harvard?
The award would be for Harvard District. The consortium piece is that we would be doing the work with Harvard in terms of just being able to have our teachers work together around some professional learning. And when we're using, there would be different kinds of assessments, the kinds of information that's included in the clean, and how we're using that information. So the partnership is really a learning opportunity for us.
And it also provides cost savings. So if we're going to hire an expert trainer, then dollars can be shared between the other school district and our school district, and they come to one place, and everybody gets trained. So it's a way to optimize your resources. And we're going to continue to work on really, you know, improving early literacy in K through 3. Anyway, it's an ongoing part of Massachusetts' expectations for students as a part of the standards. So it allows us to purchase things that we will continue to make use of after the grant, during the grant, and the training as you train people. The training is invaluable.
I don't want to sound skeptical, but I don't know what a lot of the terms mean. So I'm just going to ask a simple...
Let me look up to the table, Dr. Gilson.
Does Dr. Bukas or Dr. Gilson?
Or Dr. Burnham.
Does this grant commit us to spending money in any way? Is there any mandatory expenditures on the part of the school district?
What it allows us to do is to optimize what we would spend anyway. So that's where I see the real benefit. We have to work on early literacy. We need to make our programs better as part of the continuous strategy for improvement. It aligns with our work towards preparing students for stronger MCAS scores in grade 4. And it's kind of what I see as a win-win proposition. It was very well-defined. The state is offering 27 million... Dr. Bukas, is it 27 million to school districts around the state?
Yeah.
Yeah. So then we have every opportunity to get this and every opportunity to benefit our success here.
Okay. I'm going to just follow up. I'm really sorry. So yes or no, does this commit us to making expenditures that we would not otherwise make?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Okay?
I just want to say that I think in looking over this information with my primary school educator hat on, this is a great opportunity, I believe. I can't see any way that this would not be helpful, that you're doing this anyways. You're working on things that's going to help to focus what you're doing anyways and give you additional funding with which to do it. I think it's a great opportunity.
How is the Prism grant different than what we would be doing normally?
So what it would do is allow us to pay our teachers for their time outside of contractual time to engage in some additional professional learning. It would allow us to purchase additional Tier 2 and 3 instructional materials and to have those available for interventionist for teachers to meet students' needs.
Dr. Bukas? When you say Tier 2 and Tier 3, you want to explain a little bit?
Sure. So the NTSF model that was implemented a couple of years ago in Lunenburg, Tier 1 instruction is classroom instruction that all students partake in. It's universal instruction. You would, Lunenburg, purchase HMH, which is universal for instruction for the classroom. Sometimes you need additional instruction in small groups. It can take place in the classroom. It can take place with NTSF interventionists. Sometimes the same materials work. Sometimes it might be something different in order to meet students' needs. And so having different other materials available to meet where that learning is, to teach to some prerequisites skills is important. So that would allow us to make the purchases of those materials. And find through those materials like decodable books, verbal A literacy, or one-time purchases. And so if this grant allows us to make that purchase, we have them available for our teachers.
Another key factor is coaching to actually move instructional practice along, specific to the discipline. So it would support trained coaches that really know what they're doing with evidence-based instructional models. So I don't see how you could lose. It's a win-win potentially.
Dr. Bukas, thank you for explaining basic ideas. I have no experience with educational terms. So all of the explanations you give are really valuable, and I have only one term to look up later, which is a decodable book. I thought all books were decodable, but apparently that's not great.
You need your secret decoder ring.
Yeah. Oh, oh, all right. Got it. I'm going to have to look that up. Anybody have any other questions?
Does the grant provide specific training or just, does it provide money for training of a curriculum of our choice or the curriculum we're currently using?
Yeah. It can be whatever. Again, when we do that assessment with the coach that Desi will provide for the district to do this work, we can decide what professional learning is needed in our district specifically. And so we'll support that professional learning. It might be around curriculum. It might be around some other instructional practices. It might be around how to work with a small group of students and how to read the assessments that we call data literacy, learning how to read the assessments so that you can make good instructional decisions. And so that will be determined internally based on that needs assessment in the first year.
So if we partner with Harvard, then it will be the needs of Harvard and Turkey Hill and the primary school?
Their needs will be different than our needs. And so we'll be able to spend their money, a portion of their money, and we'll be able to spend a portion of our money. There will be some needs that are the same. We already had a couple of conversations with Harvard. We went over and out with them to talk about where they are in the process of early literacy instruction. And there are some similarities that we could partner together. And it helps widen sort of the circle of learning for our educators, too, visiting each other, understanding, having other thought partners in this work. And so there'll be some similarities, but there will also be some very important areas that we need just for our districts, our individual districts.
My main issue with this, because it sounds fantastic. It really does. It's money, is just the part that says LEAs will be expected to take these costs on. When it talks about the decreasing support, 75% in the first, in the second year, 50% in the third year, 25% in the fourth year, LEAs will be expected to take these costs on as a part of the regular operating budgets to fulfill grant expectations and to continue in the program for the maximum five years. This requirement may be waived by the commissioner in exigent circumstances. So I am very worried that we are signing ourselves up for another unfunded, partially-funded state mandate, and we are signing ourselves up for someone from the state to come in and set probably what we would be doing anyways, but it would limit our ability on the budget. It would limit our flexibility on the budget.
Just for a point of clarification, the Department of Ed would take on 75% that year, and it's a decreasing amount that they would take on. So it's not 75% that the district takes on, 25% to the opposite. I just wanted to make that point.
So I think that the... This comes in a time when we just went through a pretty traumatic budget year. And we're all very, I think, concerned about the possibility that we're bringing in new money that commits us to spending long-term money that we don't know exactly what our financial situation is going to be in the out years and our ability to continue to fund these new programs. What you're telling me, Dr. Gilson, though, is a little bit different than that. The way I hear you illustrating this is that this is money that we're probably going to spend anyway. And if we can get 100% more in the first year and 75% more in the second year, you know, and you view this as additive, then it's a different way of looking at it, right? And I appreciate what you're doing because in my view, And I appreciate what you're doing because in my view, it's very difficult to advance the ball without a substantial amount of energy behind that ball to move it forward. And if you're just doing the same, same with the same funding, it's very difficult to find that progress. And so, you know, I understand that this comes with risk in as much as, you know, this could wind up being tied into new requirements that we don't know about or those kinds of things. I understand that anxiety, but I also feel like, you know, this is an opportunity to get some substantial funding that, you know, we're not otherwise going to get, and we're going to be rubbing nickels together in six or eight months from now anyway, looking to do the same thing.
It's strategic, it's focused, it's thoughtful, and you will see a result because it is evidence-based and that is, and DESI often provides, and I've had experience with many DESI partners, and they really do encourage your teachers to be mindful and put more thought into their work output. And the coaches that we've worked with have been exceptional, and they've really moved instructional practice in ways that I would have wanted. So I think it's money well spent, and I think there's a strong synergy with every single goal that we have.
So if I was making an analogy to like my house, I'm planning on redoing the driveway, and then I find out that Massachusetts has a REBRE program that lets me get 50% off my driveway. That's essentially what we're doing. We're already doing this. Okay. Then, all right. Any more questions?
No. I mean, ultimately, if you think it's a good idea, we've hired you to tell us what a good idea is because you are the one who knows. I just, I'm slightly worried about that. It was also, I didn't have a lot of time to digest it because I did not know what an LEA was, and none of the acronyms I was trying to connect made sense.
Yeah. This is really hard. Some of this stuff is really hard to unpack.
If you do have acronyms that you're seeing, we went through the same thing, just ask. Don't, you know, there's no question that can't be answered. And acronyms, I know my acronyms. Dr. Burnham knows her acronyms for sure, and so does Dr. Bookus. So don't ever hesitate to just reach out.
Educators love acronyms.
The fact that there are two different acronyms for school district, SAU and then LEA, I think that might be BS.
You got it, Ed.
Yeah, all right. Dr. Bookus, thank you so much for answering our questions, and thank you in particular for dumbing it down for me.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
All right. We need to take a vote?
I would make a motion to accept this attempt at the PRISM grant and have it turned in on time and hope that everything goes swimmingly.
There was another
There was another cyber agreement.
Oh, and the other one. And I would also include the IT grant.
Oh, can I ask a question about that one, too?
Oh, second, and then we can
Yes.
Who is the cyber grant from? Is it from the state?
State.
Okay. All right.
All right. Is there any need to, based on that answer, is there any need to modify or amend your motions?
No.
All right. So let's take a vote. All in favor of authorizing school employees and administration to pursue both the cyber grant and the PRISM grant?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for continuing to explore grant opportunities. We benefit greatly from that.
All right. The next thing is on the agenda is the Turkey Hill Elementary School Engineering Assessment Request for, what's the Q?
It's Request for, an RFQ is Request for, but it's actually
It's RFAS, Right Request for Services.
Okay, okay.
So Dr. Gilson has been working quite some time, lots of hours actually, in developing the document that you have in front of you. We wanted to bring it before the school committee so that everyone had a chance to review it before we post this, to solicit the service, because it is a substantial amount of money. And we want to be sure that everybody believes that the full scope of what we're looking for is included in this write-up.
Yeah, and I can also add too, I have talked with the town manager, I have talked and communicated with the assistant town manager to secure a town of Lunenburg engineering and contract for this service. I've talked to the MSBA to understand their process if you decide to go down the road of a letter of interest to apply for MSBA funding later on down the road, to make sure that this study could be referenced as a part of that. Okay? And I've also talked with colleagues in Littleton and Southborough who are pursuing their own studies. They are seeking, they're involved in the pipeline for MSBA funding right now. They've referenced studies that they have done prior. And I looked, my intention is if we were, if we were to do this, we can, if we can get it out this week, it will meet the timeline to actually give them time to finish the project before the final, before the town meeting in May. And with the intention of being fully transparent in this whole process, because it is a lot of money. And while it's a lot of money now, it could have certain implications for pathways that we choose that lead to even more money being spent by town. So, you know, Peter sent me some very good questions, and one of the questions specifically was can this be done while school is in session? It can be done while school is in session. I talked to a consulting firm to verify that fact, and they said indeed, yes, it could. So I'm looking at, you know, there's a timeline that is in the memorandum that I put together, and the timeline, basically, I have to post this in something called the central register so that it's open and fair competition for people who do this kind of work. And I need, if it's to get out in that central register, it needs to be posted by tomorrow afternoon. So if we get it out by tomorrow afternoon, then it should be in the register by September 25th. That allows it to air for, Carter recommended three weeks to go through the bidding process. So, you know, it's a minimum of two, but he said three would be ideal. And then I will offer opportunities for people that are interested in the project to walk through the project with me at Turkey Hill and allow people to submit any written questions they have that want to bid on the project, and then we'll receive the bids. And then I'm happy to involve anyone from the school committee if they want to, you know, if we want to interview. It may be obvious with the bids that we get that there's win clear choice above all others. It might need, require some sort of interview process to select the best person to do this job or the best firm, because it's obviously going to be a group of people. ADA compliance also is one thing, but I thought as part of that, I've referred to something called MEAP, which is to mechanical, electrical, and plumbing services. And then also there's something called FP, which is fire protection systems. And so that's a standard part of one of these kinds of studies. And so, you know, so we've tried to identify a full timeline and hoping that somebody could complete the work with time to ponder all the different aspects of it by April 30th. And I think the other thing that I was intent on as the project goes forward is that each, there are three different phases, and each phase needs to really have progress, progress updates that inform you as a school committee what's going on at every step of the way. And so when it gets time to come up with the draft study report and then the final report, it shouldn't seem like there are any surprises. I want people to feel like they've been very well informed along the way. So that's kind of like my deal. And I want to be very transparent, but I want to make sure that we're doing, all of us putting together a study that will ultimately be usable for valuable information, because I don't want to do that if it's not going to be usable.
Right. Have you gone through this process before?
No.
Really? Okay.
No, but I'm strategic and thoughtful and very well studied, and I believe in timelines and transparency, so.
So I have just a few comments, and this will reflect, you know, some of the email that I sent you last night. So the background, a very high level on this was, this was originally scoped at a much smaller amount, but specifically for ADA purposes. And then as we looked at the capital plan request last year over a number of meetings and discussions with Mr. Jeffries, who at the time was the chair of the select board and I believe remains the chair of the municipal building committee, it was asked of us to kind of look at the building in its totality so that the town can begin to make some decisions around what do we want to do for an elementary school? Do we want to rehab Turkey Hill and modernize it? Do we want to repurpose Turkey Hill and build another elementary school? You know, what do we want to do? And in my mind, there are four elements that we need to consider here. ADA is the first one and probably the biggest one, because anything else that we do in that building is going to trigger an ADA project.
Yes.
Which is going to be a really expensive project. It's going to include elevators and widening doors and bathrooms and all sorts of things that are going to be expensive. You mentioned MEP and FP. I think that those are important elements as well, because in the event that we were to decide, no, this isn't our long-term solution, but we need to put that building on a plan for, to sustain, because it's a building, you know, that has a value of somewhere between 10 and 30 million dollars and we need to maintain it, and someday we're going to turn this back over to the town, we want that building to be in sustainable condition, unlike what we currently have at TC Passios.
Right.
The third area is, how do, if we were to program this building to continue to be an elementary school in perpetuity, what does that actually mean? Right? Because that building was built as a middle school, not as an elementary school. I went to elementary school in TC Passios, and there was a sink and a bathroom and closet space and all that stuff in every room that doesn't exist in Turkey Hill. And that's just one example of how the buildings are not set up the same. And so what would that mean from a planning and analytics perspective?
I think what that would mean, as you consider different sized schools or models of school, I think that would mean a higher price point, to be frank with you, because Southborough, Northborough, Southborough is in the pipeline, in the MSBA project line right now. And what they require is not, is that you do an additional feasibility study. So they had a much larger project, you know, to look at, you know, what the building would look like in terms of elementary school model. And I think that the 275 price point is what it is. It will, hopefully it will do MEAP, it will hopefully will do FP, hopefully it will do ADA well. But again, it's about being able to choose the best quality design for what really our needs are. So I'm not sure that I would go there yet, because it's just really, it's about what do we need to do to rehab the total building, to make it functional? You know, is it worth renovating? How would we renovate? How much money would we spend while we're renovating to get there? And then really looking at if we decide to, whatever direction we decide to move forward in, if it's a statement of interest to apply for MSBA funding, we can travel down that road, or we can continue to like probe what we see as part of the report to see if it really is worth going down the renovation road.
Do you believe as written, what is, what would be delivered as a result of this would be adequate to take a step into at least, you know, get us what we need to apply for MSBA funding, to submit that letter of interest and move forward?
If I talked to the person, actually, just a couple of weeks ago, and the person said, well, why aren't you applying in, you know, there's a January to April window? Because by the time you're notified, it's November, December of the following year. So, you know, so there's lots of things to consider, and I think sincerely, as, you know, I would invite you if you wanted to interview, I'm hoping we get more than one bid for the project. You know, and it would be something that I would welcome, people inviting, you know, asking those questions. MSBA has said that whatever we get from this study, we can put in a statement of interest as a reference point. So, you know, contingent upon, you know, if they do pick us up in the pipeline, if we do go down that road, then I think, you know, they're going to do another feasibility study to start before they, you know, before they, you know, hired the construction company to do the project. And so I think it's just incumbent on, you know, interested people to want to ask the right questions as we pick a designer. And I've even asked the town manager if he'd like to be on the interview panel, you know, and he said yes.
It's getting closer, I'm going to wait.
Yeah. So, you know, so that's, I guess my thing is if we don't get it out to bid, then we can't go anywhere with it. And so I, you know, so my reason for just saying, okay, is, you know, is ADA, MEP, and FP, mechanical engineering and plumbing, fire protection, ADA, is that what we want to get out of this study? And continue to monitor through different phases, whether they come in and they present or whether we put a progress report in the Google folder for the school committee to evaluate. It's kind of strategic, because along the way, if you catch something more or you would like something done in a finer way, we could speak to them and hopefully get that going.
So one other thing that was not, I didn't see covered.
Yeah.
In that building in particular, and we, you know, we have the same evolution in TC Passios, these buildings were built before anybody knew the word internet.
For sure.
And as a result of that, we've got cable hanging, you know, all over our buildings that is not designed the way it's supposed to be. So when we talk about electrical, are we talking about, you know, I don't necessarily need network designs or a Wi-Fi coverage plan or those kinds of things, but like, will we have conduit that will ultimately be able to give us, you know?
If you're going to update a 1969 building and bring it up to meet current code requirement, that in my assumption would be what that would mean, because no one can exist right now in any kind of building without
Well, that's, so that's obvious. My question is, is relative to the RFP in front of us and what we're asking for.
Yes.
Would an electrical plan include a, you know, the capacity to run that infrastructure together with the electrical runs?
I would want that to be the case, you know, and hopefully, I would assume that any electrical person understands that and the nature of school buildings. And, you know, we've also asked people as part of the selection process to share with us any other similar projects that they've done and to be able to speak to that in writing as part of the bid process and as part of the selection. So, you know, I don't see that anyone doing this work would not be up and thinking about that.
Okay.
I have a nitpicky one.
Go ahead. I love nitpicky questions.
Uh, section Section one on the RSTH ADA study doc. Section one, part B, the last sentence is Turkey Hill is an elementary school designed to include grades three to five? It was not designed for that. And I know that's.
No, that's okay, that's fun.
I know that's still nitpicky.
No, but actually, I think that's.
It's a good point.
At a little level of context, it probably should be added there.
Sorry. I don't think it describes the situation, which is we've got an elementary school and a middle school.
Right. Okay, so I can either say Turkey Hill is an elementary school that includes grades three through five that was originally designed.
And 1969 is a middle school.
Yep.
Sorry, I.
No, no, no. That's why I'm asking. It's, I think it's a great point.
Yeah. Yeah, I felt like that didn't quite convey what the situation was.
Okay.
Now, much like Tony doesn't know education ease, I have no clue about this stuff. So, does this include anything about the envelope of the building?
And the roof?
The mechanical is that?
That would be mechanical?
I don't know. And I'm just asking.
Again, it's what you pay for. So, it's not only, it's like, what will they provide within the parameter? And the other thing I was going to say is, you know, the cost is listed as 275K, all right? Then there's gonna be some kind of an advertising fee.
Of course.
But there's this other piece of, you know, looking at, we've got a lot of capital management projects right now. And ultimately, I am, I would consider, and I've said the fees will not exceed $250,000, not meaning to cut the projects short, but really looking at, do we need to have somebody on top? I mean, I don't mind myself being on top of this project, okay? But I also am cognizant that I need to be on top of the whole school district budget, okay? And, you know, strategically, if you can find someone good that might be able to manage this as a capital plan project, stay on top of it because I do see it as really important. And, you know, if we don't get some, you know, if we're not meeting timelines, if we're not getting the thoroughness of a project, what good is it to get it done? So, I'd rather get it done well and have, you know, and look at, you know, deploying some of the funding for the actual management of this total project.
Have we talked to Municipal Design about this study at all? I don't know, delay it, but.
This was discussed.
I know.
Yeah, this was discussed.
The money came.
With their Chair at length. Exactly a year ago, during the run-up. This was included, this was funded as part of the FY25 capital plan, so.
Because this study, I think, is gonna give the town.
It's important.
It's not just for the school. We need it as the town.
And that's how we sold this at the time.
We need this to make decisions about.
It's about the future of the students and also, it's about the future of the fiscal health and well-being of the town as well.
So, I do think as I look at this, I think Carol raised a good point. We may want to include some additional language around envelope, doors, windows.
I mean, I know we have something on doors out there, but I mean.
But I think that.
The longevity thing.
Yeah, I think that the longevity of the envelope needs to be part of the assessment. And any estimated costs associated with the envelope. And that may or may not be interpreted as.
I don't, yeah.
We may need, I mean, again, yeah. Again, 250, we can always put it in.
Yeah, right.
And if they can do it, great.
Talk about what.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But the envelope is high on the priority. Those are, especially in light of TCP, that is what's favored.
Right, I mean, the difference is, is that there are there are other tradespeople and companies and experts locally that are not necessarily school architects or ADA experts who can tell you when you need to replace your roof or how you, you know, what do we need to do to replace your windows? So, it's, it may or may not be part of this, but the reality is, is that what we sold to the town was sort of a promise here that this would be instrumental in our ability to make a much more informed.
Decision.
Decision around that building.
And I think what you'll find too is in terms of qualifications required, I mean, essentially, I'm looking to assemble like a wide body of expertise.
Yes, absolutely.
Right? You know, architect, planner, civil engineer, traffic engineer, structural engineer. Cause it's not just to about the roofing, it's about the structural, like foundation of the building. You know, and so MEP, FP engineers, landscape architect. I mean, anything you could possibly think of, I think, is in this qualifications required list, so.
Dr. Hilsen, one thing that I had discovered when we were working on the air conditioning project for the elementary school or the primary school, I just wanted to put this out there so that you have a little bit of context and figure out a way to try to cut these things from happening off at the bats. The primary school was designed with a whole building air conditioning system. So, it had different windows, a different layout. At the last minute, the town decided not to fund the whole building air conditioning. And as a result, we got a building that was worse in every possible way. Because it was designed contemplating the air conditioning system, it didn't have the windows that would allow for, you know, cool air to come in and all those things to mitigate, but not, you know, completely take care of the need for air conditioning. So, we saved money in the short term, but like shot ourselves in the face in the short term. And then, we had to spend more than we anticipated in retrofitting it with the mini splits. And now, the grants have helped a little bit. But like, when you're conceiving of this plan, it might be helpful to make sure that something like that doesn't happen. I know you can't do this with a 100% certainty.
I can just wave my magic wand.
Right, but like, you know, it struck me as like they asked for a car and then didn't pay for the engine. I'm like, why do we do this? And if we have the plan in place and it has a lot of things that work together, it might make it more difficult to pull it apart on the floor of town meeting and say, I don't know, what was the savings on that?
I have no idea.
But it was like nothing compared to what we ended up expecting.
What we're gonna land on this though is, we're gonna, we're gonna have a number that is going to be a total number and then it'll probably be like, but you could have to do this first and this next and this next. And over a period of time, it's gonna cost you X number of dollars or whatever, right? And you're gonna look at that number and you're gonna compare it to the average square foot cost of a brand-new elementary school that would serve our purposes for the next 40 or 50 years, right? And that is ultimately part of the calculus that we will have to, you know, decide on as a town somewhere between the end of April of next year and the year following or, you know. But right now, we just don't know, right? Whatever we do though, right? Let's say that this project would ultimately cost us $100 and a brand-new school would cost us $110, $110, right? That $100 is gonna come with some drawbacks.
Sure.
Because it's a 55-year-old school.
Sure.
You know, so just out the gate, there are some limitations just because of the age and the layout, the security we've talked about. Like, there are drawbacks of that building that we're probably not going to be able to completely mitigate, but they are what they are, right?
I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we have a plan that is cohesive and all of the parts are integrated, even if we have to do this layout, like Peter suggested, I think this is what we'll end up doing. We need everybody, all the members of the school committee, Dr. Hilsen, Dr. Burke, we need to remind the town of the folly that was LPS. We were penny-wise and pound foolish. The kids suffered because of it, the building.
The building's lifespan has been shortened as a result.
Yes, suffered because of it. And then, we ended up spending more money than it would've cost, even adjusted for inflation.
That is why I brought this to you tonight because I really think we have to learn from what happened in the past and not have it happen again and have everybody really like collectively moving forward with free discussion on how to make a meaningful result out of this.
Both of them like an educator. All right, what do you need from us for tonight? Cause I would, I think we should move on this as soon as possible.
Yeah, I just need. I think.
Approval to post.
Approval to post.
With the slight changes in the.
With the changes, yes, of course. Yeah, I've been waiting them down as we go.
Our motion to give approval to post with the changes as discussed.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, tell you.
Oh, we gotta vote, sorry. All in favor of the motion?
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah, so it'll move forward.
All right, and great work on this, by the way. This inspired a lot of discussion, but the work that went into it to get us there was gargantuan. So, thank you very much.
It was huge.
Thank you for the critical feedback too because that's important.
I will note that we are two minutes over one hour, which is much longer than the 30 minutes I'd hoped. But I think it was a good discussion. The next thing is the FY25 quarterly budget report.
So, you have the report in your folder. There were two lines that appeared to be overspent, but they're not actually overspent. They are encumbered. And that's based on updated projections from Mr. Heeby. So, it's possible that when rates change in November for electricity, that that number will also change. So, just be aware that we have not actually stressed those lines at this point. The money is just encumbered.
I was wondering how in the world it was that cold as we all die of the heat?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I'll just say two quick things. One of the things that I do when I print out these reports, there's a line at the end that says general fund. If you look at the end of the budget report, you'll see off to the right most column, it says that the percentage of the budget that's been spent. So, at this time in the year, 15%, 15.2% of the budget has been spent. And it looks to be like people on 10-month salaries have had about 4% of their salaries expended and people with 12 months, it looks like they have about 17%, which is pretty normal, so. And then, I go line by line checking to make sure that everything looks normal.
I'm looking at the system.
Somebody will have software that does it for you.
Wait, you're doing this by hand?
No.
Well, but.
So, I've learned to do it by hand first and then I learned the quicker way.
Is this Excel?
It's, well, you can do it in Excel and you can sort. There's a way that you can sort by specific, like it's the mid-formula and there's like, you can sort by location, it's pretty interesting.
We don't have accounting software.
No, no, but what we do, Immunis data, Immunis data system. So, I had to do it the hard way than I learned the easy way.
Is doing this for you? Okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay, good. That was, that's too much work for me.
Yeah, no.
Any questions on the FY25 quarterly budget report?
Are we gonna get an end of FY24?
Yes, when it's.
Yeah.
The end of your report is done. TMS, we asked them to complete that because they were the ones that navigated FY24. They are working on it currently.
Today.
It's not uncommon that that end of year report come in later in October.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Understood.
No, yeah, that would be good. And, you know, and I think the town too. I was over to see Ezekiel today and he is just closing FY24 now cause there's a lot of reconciling you have to do. So, pretty interesting.
Hey, can I make a motion to accept the FY25 quarterly budget report?
Second. We need a vote. All in favor of accepting the quarterly budget report?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the personnel report. Dr. Burton?
Not much to report here. I have everything in the written report unless you have any questions.
No. All right, I will make a motion to accept the personnel report.
Second.
And all in favor? Fall athletics report.
We have the numbers for all of our sports teams for the fall season, broken down by grade.
One thing, I just wanna make a comment on the athletics, the fall athletic report. Every year, the cross-country team takes a trip to an invitational on Martha's Vineyard and it is a very long day. It is super fun. And I just wanna say a personal thanks to Karma Tussukna for organizing it every year and doing a great job. It is a huge morale boost for the team. It is fun for the parents and it was a great time.
It's a day trip to Martha's Vineyard?
It is a day trip that starts at four in the morning.
Oh, bless her.
I just, I like, yeah.
That sounds like a lot of fun, but.
And I have no one that needs to like get up and shower. We got up at four in the morning. Just ready to go. If you had to do your hair or something, it would take forever.
So, one area that I just wanna highlight and this is, I'm thrilled by the success of our sports teams, our overall participation, which is, you know, I would say probably slightly up this year. Some are down a little bit, some are up a little bit. But one group that is substantially up is our cheerleading squad that have gone from 13 to 21. And I was out at Frontier High School two, a week and a half ago for the football team's first away game. And the cheerleading team came out. Frontier is no small, no small trip, it's over an hour. And they, their presence was noted by the announcer, by the local cable broadcast and by the crowd that was there. They did a great job and it was really, Lunenburg showed up that night. It was a really fun night in no small part due to our cheerleading squad that is doing a great job.
Make a motion to accept the fall athletic report? And roll call vote, or no, we don't need more. All in favor, there we go, that's the words.
Aye.
Aye.
Next one, Keystone Collaborative Report.
Do you have it in your folder?
Motion to accept the Keystone Collaborative Report?
I will second that. And all in favor? Do we have no donations? Let's move on to old business. Second read of policies, facility policy, concussion policy, chapter 766 policy. I'm looking for a motion to waive the second reading.
Have we had any questions from the public regarding these policies?
We have not, but Ms. Peterson is on the call. She can confirm if she's.
No, we have not at all.
And these are posted, yeah?
Yes.
Motion to waive the second reading of the new policies?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have FY26 budget timelines and timeline and priorities.
So, I've compiled for you a timeline that includes benchmarks for town as well as finance committee, as well as the school committee. This information I was able to get from Evan Waters, the Chair of the Finance Committee. We did have a meeting to talk about the timeline and back it up from town meeting and what their report, Finance Committee report is due, how much time they would need to be able to write that report, their final hearing. So, we did back it up halfway. So, our meeting with the Finance Committee will still be March 13.
I appreciate the color coding on this. I appreciate the color coding on this.
So we still won't, won't vote our budget prior to that FinCon meeting?
I, I think, I emailed back and forth with both superintendent and the chair of the finance committee on this. Obviously, this is an area that, that I have some concerns about. As it turns out, following our last meeting, I also went and looked at our charter again.
And?
And we've got a little, we've got a little compliance problem in, in the past. The charter specifically states that, at least my interpretation, I think it's pretty clear, that we cannot vote on our budget, our final vote, until one meeting following our public hearing.
Oh.
So we have traditionally voted on the evening of our public hearing and then, and then brought it to the finance committee, traditionally, over the last few years.
Can we have a special meeting?
So we could, but you know, I think, the more I think about this, I think that we had multiple votes last year on our budget, right? Like, you know, every time there was a new column, there was a vote. And I, I think that assuming that we have the level of interplay next year like we had this year, first of all, this timeline or some, some extended version of it is probably inevitable. I think we've done everything we can do to mitigate this. But secondly, if, if there's dissension amongst our ranks when it comes to our budget, even if it comes a week or two before a final, final, final vote as written in the charter, people are gonna know about it. You know what I mean? Like, it's gonna be clear that the school committee has not resolved a position. And that's something that the finance committee is gonna need to take into account, right? And, and we will have to operate at our own schedule in terms of whatever is necessary to do our job to the best of our ability. So I'm, after the extra work went into this over the last couple of weeks, I'm comfortable enough with, with where we're at. Stipulating, we're not, we're not where I asked us to be, but I don't, I don't see another path, having had a, you know, a conversation with the chair of the finance committee and the superintendent on this. I don't, I don't see a better way to do this right now.
Can I work on fixing it next year?
I, I don't see a fix to this.
The timeline.
Personally, because of the health insurance issue. If the health insurance were pulled out of our budget and given to the town, then that would be a different issue. But as long as we have to wait for that number, I don't see, and, and I know the interim town manager wants us done earlier, because he says he can't balance this budget till our budget is voted on, but we don't have the number, so I don't know what you do about that. You know, he had made a comment about taking the number that is given in the end of January, you know, and using that number, but then if it goes over, what are you supposed to do? You know, I don't know.
What if we did that? So one of the things the Budget Task Force is looking at is ways to simplify processes in town as a means of saving money, or if we can't save money, at least predict where the cost increases will come. And so what if we asked at the Budget Task Force that will then make a recommendation to the Select Board and to FinCon to create a special line item in the town's budget just for healthcare, because they all get healthcare from the same source? The fact that we're, that all town employees have the same healthcare, but the teachers' healthcare is part of our budget, why not just make it a separate item? And that way, we can approve our budget, the town will have control over the healthcare thing, which they already have control over anyway, and it will allow everybody to see, you know, what our budget is, absent this potential shock in the system. It will allow us to comply with the charter, and it will give everybody a chance to, to vote on the things that we actually do control. Like, I don't understand why it's part of our budget if we have no control over it. It makes no sense.
The number of employees we have.
Sure, I get, I get that, but like, they're all in the same pool, right? It's the same insurance pool. So like, separating them out because of which building they work at in town makes sense when we have control over what it is that they do.
Yeah.
But when we don't have control over it, segregating them based on address makes no sense.
The thing that doesn't make sense to me is that we hold it, but the other departments don't hold it.
Correct.
It would make more sense to me if other departments did hold it, but I'm not on the.
It definitely does not make for apples and apples budget.
No, no.
No, because when, you know, when a department is asking for, to change to full, from part-time to full-time, it, it makes it harder for them to realize the true cost of that.
Dr. Gilson or Dr. Burnham, what do you guys think about that? Is that a dumb idea? And please tell me if it's a dumb idea.
I don't think it's a dumb idea. It's an idea.
Neither do I.
I mean, like, this strikes me as the same silliness of us submitting requests for permission to spend money to the town, but then send it back to us saying you can't, and they have no idea, or, they have no idea what it is that we need the money. I mean, it just, it's like we're duplicating work unnecessarily.
So I think, I, I think it, it solves, it defers a problem for us, but it doesn't actually solve the problem.
It doesn't solve the problem of not knowing how much the health insurance.
Because you're, you're shifting an unknown back to the town manager who still has to balance the budget, and may have to balance the budget by taking money from us to do that, right?
Sure.
So like, it's, it's a, it's all the same, they're two pockets in the same pair of pants.
Sure, but what it will do is it will tell them what is for sure in one of the two pockets, right? Because if we have an unknown and the town has an unknown around healthcare, and that delays us from submitting our budget in its entirety, that's a problem. But if we could submit our budget minus the healthcare portion, it would at least give them the ability to project what they're gonna spend overall earlier, knowing that, you know, the, the healthcare thing is still up in the air. I mean, last year, the healthcare thing was, I mean, I don't really understand all the numbers, but that seemed like a crazy situation where it could be, you know, oh, we're totally fine too. Everybody, we are entering Mad Max territory. This is like the collapse of civilization in Lunenburg. And if we have the known, I don't like to use wrong sort of language, the known unknown of healthcare sitting out there, but we can give them the information about our own budget for the things we do control, it will lessen the impact of that.
No, no, no.
But we can still do that.
Yeah.
We can still say.
There's nothing preventing us from doing that.
This is the budget that we have decided on. They used to do exactly as you said. This is, this is within the last 15 years or so that this change was made.
Got it.
And was made because the superintendent at the time thought that if the healthcare went down, those savings were in the school pocket, so that's why that was done.
Yeah, the reciprocal is obviously also true.
The reciprocal has been quite nasty.
I think that the, part, part of what we're also gonna have to deal with this year is, is that, you know, we currently have an interim town manager, we don't know if we'll have a permanent town manager when this all rolls in. The likelihood that if we do have a permanent town manager, they're just gonna be like getting their feet on the ground and not, you know, not know the telephone number, let alone the budget. The, this is gonna be another weird year as, as a result of that. And, and we're not necessarily going to be operating under the previous regime, which is, this is your number, you know, this is what you have to conform to. Maybe it can be a needs-based approach and, and we come at it that way, right? The charter is pretty specific, though, in terms of what the process is, and, you know, kind of like the state budget starts with the governor, the town's budget does start with the town manager i- in the process, and, and we are later in that process. So it, it's a tough deal, right? I mean, there's no good way of doing this. I've been at this, this is my sixth year at it, and I don't have any better answers than I did my first year.
Can I quote, can I reference you as the source of ancestral wisdom on this? Because if I go to the Budget Task Force and I said, you know.
Oh, Mary Foyle agrees with me.
Oh.
We've had this discussion.
All right, well.
So, so it's not just me.
Mary Foyle and Carol Harscham will agree on something.
They agree on a lot.
Put it down.
I think they agree on a lot.
No, no, when, when, we've discussed this previously, and she sat there nodding her head, so that's institutional history. I, I think if you want to double-check it with Liz, Liz would also have that history.
Liz would know. Okay, do we need to take action on this?
I don't think we do.
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for compiling this. It is very helpful and a little terrifying.
All right, the next item on the agenda is school committee goals. I don't mind having a discussion, but Brian is really, I don't want to do this without Brian.
I, I would agree. I, I would like to say, though, I think language-wise, he did a wonderful job laying this out.
Yes, yes, yes.
He's a math teacher, but he is good with words.
He's good with words.
Yeah, this was fantastic. And I would like to say that the, the goal of facilities and capital planning is going to be hard, because we're not gonna get the Turkey Hill information until, what, the end of April, if.
If all goes well.
Yeah, if all goes well, and, you know.
Strategically, and you want to give them like the four months to get the project, yeah.
I think that might not be an attainable goal.
It may need a longer time.
Yep. I mean, that's certainly been a goal since I was selected, so I'm very excited about tonight that we've jumped forward a little. But I, I think that the special attention given to Turkey Hill School is going to be hard when we're not gonna have the information until the very late spring. But I am very happy with the operational excellence and employee support goal.
I move to table.
Okay.
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is reports. I, if I could just go quickly, the Budget Task Force met on Monday, we were soliciting information from the different stakeholders in town, specifically if you had a union, the unions showed up. Everyone showed up, literally every single union, I think every single union in town. Paris did not, but they were, I think, well represented by the teachers, and they have, I think, a contract, so they're in a little different state than everybody else. Mary Foyle and Tim Chayscreen showed up for the teachers, Brad McNamara showed up for the police, Christos Laka, I forget how to say his last name, Christos showed up for the fire department, our own Chrissy Carboni showed up for secretaries, Chief Gamble was there, Chief Sullivan was there. Marion Tim did a really good job at laying out a case for the teachers. They were pretty compelling in showing that we were, as we all know, that we are at, either at the bottom or the second to bottom rung among comparable towns, and that, for the first time, the privilege of working in Lunenburg is not outweighing the fact that we don't pay them enough. I think all of this is stuff that we all know, because we saw retention and attrition over the past two years. Brad also talked about this issue. He was hoping to go beyond being average, in other words, police departments paid in the middle of the pack of their comparable towns, and he's losing people to those other places. He noted that Chief Gamble is retiring on October 19th. I think the town is grateful for Chief Gamble, but I, my experience with the police department shows that he is an extraordinarily good chief. And they do not have a current, currently, they do not have a chief selected, so there is a lot of uncertainty. They have a contract coming up, and Christos echoed some of the things that Mary and Brad said, but he added one thing on top of that, which is, the current proposal for work week hours for the fire department is among the worst in the state. There's only, I think there were only two towns that he mentioned that had a worse work week than they did. One of the problems is that means that there's no full-time person on staff on Sundays, so don't get sick on Sunday. The other thing that it meant is that the chief himself was doing hospital runs with people, which means he's spending time waiting for discharges at hospitals when he could be doing fire chief things, as opposed to, you know, driving people around things. Chrissy Carboni mentioned that the secretaries in town were paid radically less than what they should be, and that the highest person on their salary structure is almost always the worst, highest person in town, so compared to other unions that are making radically less. It was a really depressing meeting. Mary made a really good point. She said that, you know, when Prop 2 and 1/2 is passed, people in Lunenburg misinterpreted it as the ceiling of what the town would fund, and what we should be looking at it as is the floor, and that other towns, and she referenced a couple towns, including Weston, that regularly pass overrides out of recognition that the 2 and 1/2% is insufficient. After that, Chief Gamble gave a really, I think, just like a really heartfelt speech that could have been taken from It's a Wonderful Life about the how, the assets of the town are great, but the people are the best assets, and that's what makes the town work, and we need to compensate those people, because if we don't, they're gonna go elsewhere, and all of us collectively will suffer. So the hope was that we would get information that would show where we needed to put some effort, but also to figure out if there was the possibility of a collective solution, and, you know, it's looking like there's a need for a collective solution, which is what we all knew. It wasn't a question of, do we need an override, but should we do one or two overrides? And I think that, you know, the prudent thing is to do two, but, you know, I don't know if the town will do it. It's clear we need it, based on what all of those people said. So it was sobering, but as I said, it was nice to have the wise minds at the table. Between Chief Sullivan and Chief Gamble, we had a lot of really good experience, and, you know, Renee and Evan are pretty smart, so.
It's a very interesting time. Oh, man.
Certainly is.
Well, I'm hopeful.
I put my finance committee update on, on the, in the folder. So just very quickly, the Mark Grant that runs around picking up people for individual rides, the grant is running out, but the FinCon voted to transfer $5,000 into this account so that this would continue to serve. Some of our kids use this, so it's important to us. They commented, most of the current capital plans running in Lunenburg are underfunded, and the interim town manager is hoping to have a short-term plan to protect the building envelopes. I don't know how he's gonna do that, but maybe he has a good idea. There was a comment that TCP is running $90,000 in the red, and they were wondering how long the school was going to be in TCP, and had we been paying what we said we would pay, which I think we have. So I don't know what the, I don't know how they got in the red, but anyways, smarter people than I would know more about that. I, I won't go through all of it, it's in the folder. Let's see, anything else? I already talked about that. There will be a warrant article at the special town meeting to appropriate $31,000 to the schools as a supplementary appropriation, as that is the over amount from chapter 70, which we don't usually get, so that's a good thing. And the, oh, the other thing that I want to mention is Ms. Tavarez has stepped down from the committee, so there is a vacancy on the finance committee.
It was about to be another one, too.
Yeah. So those are the pertinent things, but you can read the rest of it.
The town manager screening committee met last week, and we formally hired Community Paradigm Associates, which is a consulting firm that will assist us in the search and selection of a town manager. They are building what is known as a community profile, which will serve us as a document as part of the advertising for how we formulate what we're looking for, and a recruiting document. And they are already in the process of reaching out to department heads to solicit their input. So if they, you haven't already heard Dr. Burnham or Dr. Gilson, I would expect that somebody from Community Paradigm Associates is probably gonna be reaching out to you shortly. I ask that you be included in that, in that discussion, and they're looking to have short, you know, discussions in terms of what your needs and expectations are relative you know, discussions in terms of what your needs and expectations are relative to this, to this hire. Obviously, there's a great deal of strategic importance to this role. That is expected to wrap up. I believe the timeline would bring us to about a couple of weeks from now, and then an advertisement will go out. And the expectation that they set for us is that they should be done, you know, screening of initial candidates as early as mid-October, and potentially interviews by late October, initial screening interviews by late October. Those initial interviews, by the way, do happen in the Executive Committee by the Screening Committee. The names are held in confidence until we vote to submit finalists to the Select Board for consideration. So that will, that, that process, the actual interviews themselves, and the decision who to interview, will actually happen in Executive Committee, such that we're not, you know, revealing resumes that come in in confidence and that sort of thing, to protect the privacy of candidates.
So on June 6th, Cherry Cordella is the new Chair of PACSEL, and she hosted a meet-and-greet for PACSEL members to connect at her first in-person meet in over two years. It was a quaint turnout, lended support to those that attended and left attendees inspired for future meetings. This is from what Cherry sent me. They have not met yet, they will be meeting later. Just prior to the middle school open house, a new Facebook page has been created. It's called Parents Advisory Council for All Learners. So just for reference, the PACSEL is for parents and guardians of children who receive Special Education 504 ESL or Title I services. So I do, if you have a child who receives those services, I recommend joining. It's a good way to network with other parents. And so now they have a Facebook page called Parents Advisory Council for All Learners. On September 5th, PACSEL had a table in the gym during the open house for the middle school. PACSEL also appeared at Turkey Hill, and tomorrow night will be at the primary school during their open house. The table had information about PACSEL meeting dates and locations and informational text. Thank you, principals, for allowing PACSEL representation at your schools. PACSEL meetings are held the first Thursday of every month, a combination of support groups one month and PACSEL official business on the next. Meetings are a combination of in-person and Zoom, especially as winter weather makes travel tricky. So the first in-person support group kicks off Thursday, October 3rd, at 6:00 PM for adults only at the, at this building, the Middle High School in the Collaboration Room.
Additionally, there is a PTO report in the folder. Just briefly, the PTO will be doing their request for funds again, where teachers can submit grant proposals. The total amount of money that will be awarded is about $20,000, $5,000 per school. They also had some conversation around fundraising events, including the possibility of a Little Caesar's Night, a movie night at the cinema, and I think that they're looking at Sonic 3 for the movie. They're also gonna be putting out a fundraising calendar. They also talked about Penny Wars. Penny Wars is less than two weeks away, everyone. Start looking in those couch cushions for the extra change. And they also have tables for information at all of the open houses. So again, they are always looking for new members. They do great work for us, and we appreciate all their efforts, so... Additionally, you have another report from the Green Committee, which I attended and dropped a summary in there for you as well. But I did touch base on the highlights in my Superintendent Report, so I think we're all set.
That's great progress there, too, by the way. Thank you for...
Yes.
Taking that on and moving that ball.
Isn't that good news?
Yep.
We're on the second public comment period. Is there anyone online that's joined us since we originally had public comments? Because no one has joined us in person.
I don't see any hands raised.
Marlene, Emily's telephone, or Mr. Bowen, anybody have any comments? All right, there's no one in person. Does anybody in the committee have any comments? I just wanna say something real quick. I am always impressed by how our different knowledge bases and experiences in life make this committee better. And as we approach budget season, I'm confident that we will do what we did last year, which is we stuck together, we used everyone's strengths. Carol and Peter gave a really compelling presentation at town meeting. But, you know, we do, not to pat ourselves on the back, but I think we do a good job as a committee, working together as a committee. So I am confident that the budget, even if it's stressful or difficult, will work out, because we all really do have different complementary skills. So I'm glad that we're gonna do this together as a unit again. Not that I wanna do it again, but if I'm gonna have to do it again, these people are the people I wanna do.
Signed up for three more of them.
Someday, I want a normal budget season. I don't know what a normal one looks like.
All right, well...
Motion to adjourn to executive session and then adjourn afterwards.
I will second that, assuming there are no topics for future discussion.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's fine.
No, we pretty well did that last time.
All right. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.